She said they had a lot of fun last year. She's not.
I felt okay.
I'm very happy with how it went.
That's what.
No, I was.
Not personally.
I'll call this. Please rise for the political is it was different, but anyway. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Um, well, read the mission statement as part of our opening in partnership with the communities. The mission of the Dilworth Blended Adult and Sprung Is is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. We have everyone here on the board, including Sir Brittany. And we just don't need to be, um, well, as Scott asked in here, um, some special education. Close, Mr. Stedden. Um, we don't have any visitors to speak tonight, so we'll go on to number four. This is, um, no changes to the agenda?
No changes, nope.
This is to, um, adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Laura, uh, second.
Second.
Second by the whole, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion. On to number five, public comments and rebel recognition. Public comments tonight, but rebel recognition.
Um, Saturday went to the play, Saturday night, they did a lot of the kids I see, they must had a little wrap up or something tonight because they're out here, they were having McDonald's and a few other things, but, uh, uh, I'm just impressed, it was very well done. Um, it, uh, it was long, so just thinking my wife and I when we left, the number, the amount of lines they had to remember was like unbelievable and they, they did a very good job, so it was good, so. So kudos to them and I think they did theirs Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and so that's done, but yeah. It was good.
And the football team.
And the football team, uh, yeah, that's right, we have enemies in San Antonio. Yeah, so a great run, but very difficult loss, uh, at US Bank. Wasika played Annandale very tough, so a championship game, we definitely belonged in the final four for sure. Could have battled for the championship, I would say, so again, congratulations to them.
Great season.
And winter sports are started, or activities have started, so, yeah, a lot happening.
Any other rebel recognition? We'll go on to report six point one, special education report. I was gonna say Madison, but it's Madison.
Yeah. I even said it.
Redeligated. Redeligated.
Well, thank you, everybody, thanks for allowing me to be here. Uh, it's my turn to present to the board, so I talked to Shannon this morning, okay, type of law finances, it's like, yeah, let's do it. So in front of you, kind of talks about twenty-three, or does talk about twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five years in relation to special ed finance. We had a lot of conversations about special ed finance, when they're considering joining Lake Agc, so in twenty-three, twenty-four, that was the year when you're on your own, twenty-four, twenty-five is when you joined. So the first table you have in front of you is state special education expenditures. So we want our expenditures to, um, stable, stable, be stable or go down. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, you had three point three million dollars in expenditures that were back to the special education. In twenty-four, twenty-five, you had two point nine four one, um, million expenditures. So that's a drop of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Associate that to a variety of different practices, um, but realizing some efficiencies with cooperative level staff where you may not need a full one, but we can share between districts. Reimbursement, the district went from two point seven five zero in twenty-three, twenty-four to two point six one three. So that's still projected, it takes about until November of next year before it's all finalized, but it's pretty darn close to what it'll be. There is a reduction in reimbursement because in special education, you have to spend it to get the money. So the less you spend, the less money you get. But then if we look at the unreimbursed costs, which is the biggest thing to look at with this table, in twenty-three, twenty-four, the district had five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in unreimbursed costs. That's direct hit from special education on the general fund to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So I wish we could have covered all of these expenses, um, that exist related to special ed, but we can only control some of it based on the formulas that exist if I don't stay. So that's a reduction of unreimbursed cost of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Is the, the reduction in, in reimbursement expenditures, expenditures to the kid, any less kids utilizing the service or?
So the reimbursement exists, it's all based on how much you spend. So the more you spend, the more reimbursement you get, but it doesn't cover all of it. So a lot of that then comes down to that first piece of having the reduction in expenditures, that means you're going to get less. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And the top line is the next two lines added together, correct? The reimbursables and the unreimbursed costs equal the total expenditures. Is that roughly the?
See that one more time.
Um, these two lines, the reimbursement and the unreimbursed, if you add those two together, that equals the.
So it's expenditure.
Okay.
What's the driver for the loss, the reduction in expenditures? Is it, I think it's kind of going back to what Troy's saying, just differently. Is it because we're able to share expenses or?
Yeah, so we have conditions that are shared across cooperative, um, we had some efficiencies with the conservative staffing levels, all those types of things.
Yeah, just the shift on the director alone was a hundred thousand, so, or give or take.
Could you give us a couple examples of what would be an unreimbursed cost?
So anything related to special education where you didn't get reimbursed. So I'm going to maybe back this up with some context. So in, let's just say, twenty-four, twenty-five, just short of three million dollars in special expenditures. That's everything all together. Then you get essentially, it's a big long formula, but you get a percentage back of all those expenditures. So that's the unreimbursed cost. So it'd be anything special ed, but you only get a percentage of revenue of your expenditures. That answer your question?
So if it's an eighty percent reimbursable, twenty percent is on us.
Correct. We have those.
Well, they don't dial it down to say you can have so much repair expenses, there's so much equipment or.
Transportation.
Yeah, so it's all, all, all up together.
Everything kind of falls into different categories with different reimbursement and then it gets all tied in with, um, six or seven age reports that files it all, and then proration and auctioning and access costs and such. So you can't really identify what wasn't reimbursed.
What would you say, what would you say, Scott, to, to the amount that's kind of hanging there? Which is the next year when we get reimbursed for these things, or we get, we get the cleanup, if you will.
Yeah.
That, we're not going to see that until when?
What year?
So, so for the twenty-four, twenty-five, now we do have the cleanup, right? Now we have it all cleaned up, right?
Yeah.
So, okay. I, I guess, I think that's the other part, I guess, is sometimes, because we have to wait for some of it. It's here, yeah.
So it, I say projected because it's November, which before then, but next year.
Yeah.
Before that's all finalized, because some district in the state, they're behind, it takes too long.
For the reporting.
Time to finalize it all and such, but it doesn't swing a whole lot.
Okay, so that's why you say you still feel good that this number's got to be really close, yeah?
Yeah, it's pretty stable.
Okay.
Okay, just looking at our numbers, I mean, last year, I mean, we had twenty percent unreimbursable, this year we're down to twelve and a half, so, I mean, it's. You were at the, it seemed like it's been a good job.
Yeah, going in the direction, certainly. Yep, they helped the district buy two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the general fund. So they, the direct, the impact on the general fund was negative, really. In a good direction, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Medical assistance revenue, that is, um, revenue that exists through what's called the third party billing, so we're obligated to bill for services like speech, OT, um, personal care attendance, schools that might have more medically based needs. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, you had ten thousand, um, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, and twenty-four, twenty-five, you had a hundred and thirty-three, eight sixty-seven. We put a lot of focus on that last year, um, helping to make sure our staff members were filling out all the necessary paperwork and getting some. So I would anticipate going into twenty-five, twenty-six, that that number's going to look even higher because building that process and system within a school takes a couple of months. But now this year, we're just getting it rolling.
So that's, so do you have any idea what the numbers were prior to the twenty-three, twenty-four year?
I, I think the twenty-two.
Were not billing in the.
We were not asking for, we were not filling out the medical assistance to the level we should have. The year before it was seventeen thousand, so twenty-two, twenty-three was seventeen something. It was just something that was missed, that was part of the evaluation of when we started digging in and Marianne and I were visiting and, you know, we needed to do something different. Yeah, unfortunately, that has been the missed opportunity for, well. Yeah, we're capturing now, now. The other thing we're not going to see is, now that we know we're, you know, we got this dialed in, we're not going to see that kind of swing, right? But we're going to consistently get it though, so I guess you can still call it a swing because we weren't before.
Did you say we won't stay at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
It'll probably stabilize.
Come on.
Yeah.
Keep trying.
But again.
Those are good numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Three hundred thousand.
Well, and it's not over yet.
Yeah.
So we have more to come in here.
Yep, so additional revenue sources, just because you're a part of Lake Agc, um, we, we like to ensure that our students with disabilities are attending preschools and preschools as possible. So we have tuition costs associated with that. So Lake Agc then kind of checked back to the district for sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars to cover those costs. Um, not the, the next one, not because we do anything special or great, but just because legislatively, the way things are written, uh, there's another forty thousand dollars that's available for the school district via student support personnel, and that one at a school psychologist last year. That was otherwise that, um, state special ed expense with unreimbursed costs associated with it. And then Lake Agc also has a fund balance policy where we, our target fund balance is thirty percent plus the cost of rebuilding. Anything above and beyond that, then we send back to our districts. So EGF cut of that for FY twenty-five would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five thousand. And that was just approved at our board meeting last month. Yeah, so all good news.
Are these, are these revenues, are these reimbursements inside the street, inside the two point six, of these, the hundred and thirty percent? This is all separate.
Yeah, good.
So total, it's right around six hundred thousand.
I, you could make arguments of it's between four hundred and six hundred thousand, I would say.
I, I can make arguments both ways, so once I work on numbers, you know, I can figure out ways of, they go.
Yeah, certainly a, a good swing and all support.
Last question, the expenditures includes the cost of people who are shared.
Yeah, yeah. I guess the only thing that wouldn't be included within there would be the building, the education center.
Yeah, which was a hundred and five.
That sounds right, and that is, that's our share.
That's our share of that building is a hundred and five.
But that's not a direct hit on the district's general fund, that's spread out across the tax, the taxes. Yeah.
So the good news on that, I guess in my, to super simplify it, I was just looking at the fund balance policy that Lake Agc has, and a hundred and forty-eight we got back. It cost our taxpayers a hundred and five, and we got a hundred and forty-eight out of it. So it's almost like it came right to us in that sense, I guess. It's one of the ways I wanted to look at it, like we, we gained on that as a district, so. Well, we gained other, more than that here, but that, I'm just saying on an annual basis, I think we're gonna, well, the medical assistance alone is.
It zeros all the unreimbursed costs.
What's that? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, the strong argument could be made that if you had the two twenty-nine was the one twenty-three and then the six hundred, it could be that much of a swing, so. Good news.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Positive numbers.
I think it is a great news story, I'm just super curious to, and maybe this is before I have this conversation, but to understand how your fund balance was so positive. To me, it's interesting to me that at the end of all of the expenses, the fund balance was so positive that you could reimburse a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars back to the school. I mean, super excited about it, just.
Yeah, we're usually at that rate for, this is our fourth year of establishing it that way. Comes down to the way money flows at the state level. Then all of a sudden we go from six districts to seven districts and work on it that way and operate most efficiently we can.
One thing I appreciate about the cooperative is, and it's a cooperative, that's why we see money back, or, you know, normal cooperative, you have dividends or whatever, right? Um, is that they don't just keep it. They give it back to the districts when we're the ones, because of our clientele, I guess, for the most part, is generating dollars, so. Yeah.
But it's fair to say too, though, that the revenue we get from the state doesn't cover all of our special, or from the venue. It's always worth noting.
Yeah.
Well, after twenty-nine thousand unreimbursed.
But these are increases or decreases in the amount that was uncovered, would be the best way to put it, right?
Yeah, I, I wish the formula's covered, the special ed expenditures at a hundred percent, but I, you, our job at the cooperative is to leverage every funding source we can to keep that cost as low as possible for our member districts while still providing a good funding system.
This, and maybe this isn't the time either to ask this question or to go here, because I've shared a little bit with our district as we went for the referendum, talking about FY twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and the state has said they would put this blue ribbon task force together to cut two hundred and fifty million out of special ed in FY twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Can you share a little bit, because, because as we move forward, I can just see our cross subsidy that we just got two years ago, two years ago in FY twenty-three, that jumped nice, we got four hundred and fifty thousand from the state, and now I'm afraid they're just going to say, you know, we couldn't find any. Because one of the things that I'm hearing as a superintendent is they might be grabbing some of that back. What, what are you hearing, if anything, on that?
Yeah, so somehow over the last legislative cycle, special ed got pinpointed as like the spot where we're going to find two hundred and fifty million dollars.
Yeah.
Not sure of, everything that exists, special ed is one that was identified. Um, but this blue ribbon task force has the expectation, and I'm not sure what it is, but it's within the next year, so.
Yep.
If you come up with two hundred and fifty million dollars in savings statewide in special ed, like, that's a tough task. I'm not sure, I hope they can figure something out that doesn't have a direct effect in the district, but I'm concerned that it won't, or that they, that, that they won't be able to. Um, so then if they don't come up with any of that, then MBE has been given the expectation that you reduce, um, across, what's known as cross subsidy reduction, and by two hundred and fifty million statewide.
Right, that's my understanding.
So the cross subsidy, um, calculation currently, I think it's right around sixty percent built into this big long formula, and that would drop it down to forty-four percent. So it's not like we're going back to the six percent base.
We're not all the way back, yeah.
Um, but yeah, if that goes through, then the unreimbursed cost of the districts will increase because the state will be giving it statewide.
Right, I guess I'm just trying to, this is all, well, I'm just saying, this is good news and it's great, and obviously it's, it was part of the process of us making this shift, for budgetary reasons, right? I mean, it's like, how can we clean up and be more efficient? The other thing I wanted to make sure I said though is that, that's already been stated at the, well, they've already created a task force, such as state legislation, or legislators have. The governor is saying that, so it's, yeah, it's, I'm glad we have this now, and so hopefully we can weather that storm a little bit better.
The, the cross subsidy reduction won't go back to what it was four years ago, based on the received, it'll just drop by like sixty percent. So if that number will be higher or what it'll be, I.
Yeah.
I won't tell.
So we're at sixty percent tail today.
We're no, it's like, it's percentages and such, it's, it's a part of the calculation on the cross subsidy reduction where it's sixty, sixty-ish percent right now, and then that would drop, I think, to like forty-four.
That's just the cross subsidy piece.
It's just one part of the.
It's one piece of the funding, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a few pages.
Any other questions for Scott? Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it.
All right, we'll go on to six point two. This is the comprehensive achievement civic credit is for. We'll have Mr. John present on that, you got a handout here.
Yep, you have a hand, yep. This used to be the world's best workforce.
Yes, okay, so I'll skip down to the bottom, um, surveys of staff, students and families, this is actually new as well, so we need to survey our families. Um, so the elementary day in March, five point scale was used, five meaning they strongly agree, one they strongly disagree. And in all categories, we had sixteen statements, and all categories, our average was about four point five. So that was, that was good to see. Um, some things being asked were my child supported at school, my child's school encourages and supports me to be involved. My school wants them to not just learn, but be happy. Things along, things along that aspect, um, hopefully in March, we can survey those four points. So that will be coming down. Um, and now all the goals and the results, so our goal back in twenty-four, twenty-five, for all students are ready for school, so this one focuses on early childhood, was that children's screen between their third and fourth birthday increases from twenty-eight percent to thirty-two percent. We didn't meet that goal, we are at, we were at thirty-five percent last year. Um, and you can see the breakdown right there. Now this, this coming year, we've kind of changed our goal, so I did visit with Tracy about this, just because we can't, we don't know how many three-year-olds are out there in our district, so we just wanted to focus on the entire school readiness program. So we changed it to by June twenty-twenty-six, our district will increase family participation in early transit programs. So this means screening nights, parent engagement events, and ready, ready for kindergarten sessions. So, um, just to get a little bit of baseline from last year, we had eighty-five screenings, um, our parent engagement events, so pumpkin patch, they put that out there. There was twenty-four families that went to that. ECFE sessions, these are duplicated sessions, so if a child is in one session, they might get it again. So we had fifty-eight enrollments there. And then our kindergarten attendance, for ready for kindergarten was a hundred and four, so that was, that was a good turnout there. Um, now for twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll see where we end up, we do see that we did increase into the pumpkin patch event, so that was good. So that is our goal for all students are ready for school. The next one is closing the achievement gap between student groups, so our SMART goal, we, we looked at brand renewed and non-brand renewed students and where they were at in reading and math. So if you look over to the results, you can see, you can see the breakdown there. Um, our gap for twenty-four was fourteen point seven, and in twenty-five, it was eleven point four, so we did close that, so that's good. Um, and then for math, it was twenty-four point six last year, well, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-one point one, so we didn't close it. So we met that goal. We did change this goal up a little bit too, because our focus and priority is on MTSS this year. Um, so it says by May of twenty-six, the DGF elementary will start thing for instruction. So the percentage of students being grade level benchmarks through tier one, so what they're getting in their classroom, or a single cycle of tier two support, so that's with their interventionist teachers, increases from seventy-five percent to eighty percent. All right, moving on to all students ready for career in college, so this is getting into middle school, high school. Um, the twenty-four, twenty-five goal was that six twelve will continue to explore at new classes. CTE opportunities, work-based and work-based learning for our students, so those are all the classes that were added in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we did meet that goal because we added those. Um, for the referendum results, we don't know if we will be able to add more classes. So we did switch up this goal as well, students will have the opportunity to explore, explore a variety of post-secondary and workforce options. Next page, all students graduate. Our goal last year was ninety-five percent of students will graduate, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, we didn't meet that goal. The AOP is not going to be there, so just keep that in mind, and then we're keeping the same goal for next year. And then the last page, this is actually brand new to this report, all students are prepared to be lifelong learners. So this one was a little trickier to figure out the goal for. Um, this is what we came up with, by the end of twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the percentage of K-12 students demonstrating readiness for their next educational milestone, so elementary transitioning to middle school, middle school to high school, high school to secondary, they will increase in each category by grade level benchmarks, attendance and high school readiness indicators. So you can see our measuring tools right now, we don't have any, since this is a new goal, I don't have any data from last year in here. Uh, but we're going to look at attendance, pass bridge result, pass bridge result and savers results, so savers is a social emotional screener. So we did this in fourth grade, because that's right before their middle school, before they go to middle school, say with eighth grade, where they go into high school, and then eleventh grade, we're going to look at attendance, um, career in college planning with counselors, so this would be with Michael Wisco and Rob Dunston, and then their twelfth grade senior meetings, so. The hope is that they're at a hundred percent because those counselors will be meeting every single student, but we're good, Michael will be keeping data on that this year. And that's it.
I have a good question.
Yeah.
On page three, how do you plan to measure that? Students will have the opportunity to explore a variety of post-secondary and workforce options.
Good question, so that kind of ties into the last page on here, where we're working, Michael will be, um, compiling data on, um, we're partnering with Junior Achievement, it's a company, it's Fargal, and they have, um, job shadow opportunities, career fair stuff, so that will be the data we get from them.
So I know that we do the, the, um, career fair, and the colleges come in and do that. Um, but I was recently here with a kiddo from a different district who came and job shadowed me for a day, and the entire high school, um, seniors are given an opportunity to partner with somebody that they're interested in, and that's run through their office, but it's the entire day. Like that one day, um, all the juniors go to a career fair and all the seniors, so that there's no, um, kind of downtime during the day.
Yeah.
And I thought that was very valuable, and, um, I had to, I had to do homework while I was there, because I had my own checklist of things that I was supposed to cover with my students. Um, and when I worked in that district as an SRO, um, that was something that they did, and I think that they have all found it very beneficial. And I think that would be a good way, um, to connect kiddos in, in those ways, and they relied on, on a variety of different resources to get those all scheduled. I can't imagine that, um, working, um, Michael would have a lot of fun trying to schedule a hundred and twenty job shadow days or whatever, but.
Yeah.
And I was contacted by one of those, um, one of their board members and asked if I would be willing to help them, so.
Awesome.
Everybody was on a all teams approach.
Yeah, and this junior treatment day, like, had a party for us, we've been kind of trying to build that, um, I know you're at the group of the guys responsible meeting, we had talked about that. At our last one is like trying to get some people on the list to shadow, but it's just so hard compiling everything, so this company just hasn't ready for us. So we're working through that right now, was that your link?
No, it was Holly, Tori Rochon, since I think she does that through the counseling office.
And it is something that I've been, Joe, Keif and I, Mrs. Their principal, Keif and I have had multiple conversations about, I know he has met with Michael Wisco about that too. And I know that they have a list of, I think Troy, I remember a while back, you about, hey, we'd be willing to work with you as our NIO. And so I know they have had conversations, I haven't done a follow-up recently. But I know they're working on trying to create a list of people or groups that would be willing to take that on. Not sure where that's at, but appreciate the conversation.
But I just think it looks different for each grade level because each, you know, some of the students may be heavy on the education piece, and then also maybe a bunch of engineers or a bunch of nurses. And I imagine that that, you know, poses its challenges. But I think especially early in the school year gives them an opportunity to say, wow, I'm a senior now. That is not the path I want to go now. I mean, when I went to college, I had like three very different career paths in mind, entered a variety of classes at that point. And if I'd been a little easier, had I maybe...
Spent a day in the shoes, yeah, for sure.
That was one of my, with that, teaching and law enforcement, those are all very significantly different options.
So, yeah, we're, we're working on that. Any other questions?
I'll just say, and I think this is the first time that we've met all our goals.
It is, it is.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations. That's just great achievement. I think the goals were reasonable, and they were well thought out. That's just impressive. I'm just asking about that, that's great.
This, this, you know, I don't know if you guys get bombarded with questions after a board meeting or not, but this will be posted this week on our website, too, because it does have to be posted. So, you know, if ever board, you want to read this again, you can. Or if people ask about what's this all about, you can refer them to that website. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
All right. We'll go on to six point three, board committee reports in the Starford Budget Committee. And I think back, we discussed that budget. We talked about the audit, the audit is coming, but still isn't working. And I think Marcus said that just the other day. It's still waiting for some numbers to come in, and...
Yep, he was working on it today, and we met with Brady Marks today to discuss. He's going to present in December. Part of the issue, and it happened at Lake Ag, I guess he too, if Michael remembers, is that because of the government shutdown, some of the compliance things aren't official, so they can't, they can't, it can't go official official until all of that stuff gets resolved, which it sounds like it will be soon. And I'll let Brian talk to more details on that from Brady Marks when he presents in December. It was scheduled to be tonight. We had to adjust it because some of those things, and then Marcus and I met with him with some. In the last couple of weeks, they've been going back and forth on a few things on cleanup for what we can still move to last year. And so that'll all be a part of the report here when it can be completed, I guess. So that's where we're at, yeah.
And then, of course, we talked about the results from the election. I think we put that...
That was the majority of our discussion, I would say.
Might have been a little grouchy. But some thoughts about, you know, how we're gonna, how are we moving forward? We talked a little bit about setting up sort of a work session sometime in the future to go over some budget ideas. And Shannon talked about...
And making prioritizations.
Prioritizations. Shannon talked a little bit about what he was doing with the, with the principals, the directors, and meeting with them to discuss areas that they could make cuts or just going up in the future. I don't know if I think that's most of what we've had.
Yeah, I mean, a good majority of it was the reality of our referendum loss. So...
I do want to say that I love, I love the idea of having a session to talk about it in a little bit more detail. So those of us that are not part of it can have some insights into some of the conversations being had, just because I do envision questions, so making sure we're all prepared.
I don't, I can't remember if we talked about the special ed coming in better than anybody really hoped.
Yeah, I think I just, yeah, I just sprinkled that in there a little bit on that meeting, but it was, we didn't talk much about it. Because I knew Scott was coming.
And you didn't have any major numbers yet.
No, it is.
It was still being worked out, so.
Yeah, right.
That was certainly helpful, but...
We'll solve it.
We'll solve it, yeah. Any questions on budget or anything else that I missed? All right, we'll go on to meeting confer.
Yep. I was there with Michael and Angela. Trying to think back. We, the meeting went well. We talked obviously about the referendum passing and kind of what it's going to look like. If we're going to have a meeting, when, when it's going to go out to vote again. Yeah, they go down to vote. I don't know. We, we talked about, they were talking about food waste a lot, about like what other things can be done with, with just the sheer volume of food that is getting, that's rolled out. That one stands out. What do, I mean, I don't know.
Just, we shared some ideas and thoughts on how to save some things, like food, like we were mentioning. Chet had a belt referendum, things moving forward, on what may or may not be able to be done in terms of various supports or just ideas in general. Some miscellaneous stuff inside, inside the walls for just office supplies and so on and so forth. So it, as a whole, it was, it was a very nice conversation. It just kind of kept us in the loop on some things, but really, as a whole, nothing, nothing super major that was going to cause any fireworks in any way, shape, or form. So it was a lot of just, this might help, I'll do a little bit, and so on and so forth. It was, it was a very nice and good conversation. So...
Very good. Any questions for meeting confer? All right, we'll go on to the DLT.
Yeah, we had the DLT last Thursday. Well attended, again. This last week was kind of a recap also, that was part of the, it was already set up to follow up with the referendum vote. And so we discussed that quite a bit that day. It was good to hear from community members that are part of that team, questions they had about moving forward and what it might look like. So we talked about that. Ended up talking a little bit about the land swap, and what does that look like? Is that something that can change? Said, well, we're working on it. We're having some things getting done in the background right now, so we can have some meetings with the Moorehead District. Whether or not that could happen in a year's time, I don't know. We'll have to find out. So that was kind of a hot topic for a while with them. And then we just talked about there's going to be some adjustments to next year's budget. And we're going to work with directors and admin, working with the school board. We're going to have to have some work sessions moving forward to make some final decisions on what that might look like, both for the admin team and the board. I said, don't want to get into the details yet because we're not ready for that. So, yeah. Overall, it was, it was good. It was a little long for the kids that day, just because when you're talking about those things. We did ask them, you know, family saying anything, is there anything that you're worried that might affect you? It was pretty quiet, which is, and I said to them, the nice thing about the DLT, and so just to set up the next meeting, our next meeting is going to be juniors and seniors reporting. So they're going to talk about their school experience, what they like, what they don't like, what they wish we had, what they're happy we do have. So they get the floor, so I talked to Mr. O'Keefe following that meeting, said, hey, take some time now. Sit down with your juniors and seniors that are here, and they can talk, it's their time to talk about school, talk about school. But when they do that, talk about what do they like, what don't they like, you know, those types of things I just said. So I'm excited for that. And then the next one after that will be sophomores and freshmen. So that'll get us into January and February, because there's nothing in December. We don't have a meeting in December because the holidays won't get moved on, so. Yeah, so those are the ones to come. So, yeah.
Any questions on DLT?
I had one thing, actually, in meeting confer, this was actually something that was brought up, that's an interesting point. Are we ensuring that every, all of the school pupils are represented in the district leadership? Meaning, meaning are we, like, all of the voices are being heard instead of like...
National Honor Society students.
Yes, thank you. National Honor Society students.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yep. The students that we were given, I would say, for the most part, are the high flyers, yes. So that has been a discussion with our principals and talking about that. This is what we have now. We have a, one thing that's really nice is that, and Brooke, you can help me. I bet you there is probably fifteen, sixteen kids every time we have a meeting. And so that's good, but it is kind of the high flyers, if you will. And so we have talked about, okay, how do we get others in the future? So you guys got to help me. Last year, we had students here. This year, we're going to get them involved in actually presenting, and so that's what's coming up. I think we're just slowly getting there. But yeah, no, it's, it's not a group that we've talked or had as a part of the meetings at this point, yeah. So, yeah, no, it's a fair question.
Any other questions on committee? All right, we'll move on to six point four, superintendent.
Yeah, I just, as you guys know, I was out at the MREA conference at Gregan's last week, right? Yeah, Monday, Tuesday. Very, very well attended. MREA is Minnesota Rural Education Association. They're one of our groups that help us. Talked to the legislators about what are the things that we need, what, you know, how can they lobby for us or support us? They do a very nice job. That's Sam Walseth, he is their lead lobbyist who has grew up in Moorehead, so he gets what outstate Minnesota goes for. And so he's a great representative for us. Most of my sessions, which I think I shared with you this morning, because I thought I said it on Friday, and I apologize for that, was primarily on finance stuff, right? And so we talked about our LOR, and MREA, Fred Nolan is a past executive director for them. He came back out of retirement to help them for one year. And he's drawing up some LOR thing, which is similar to the farm credit, or egg school credit. So when you pass a bond, the farmers don't have to pay, there's some equalization for them in their taxes. He's trying to figure out if LOR can be similar for their average home, depending on the values of your homes and all that. So he's looking for an equalization. So a pretty deep school finance session, went to a couple of those. Then I also did go to Chris Mills, who pretended to be Fiverr. Had some of his staff there, he had a school board member there, and they talked about passing the referendum. And the session was called Passing the Impossible, because they had failed in twenty-one, they failed in twenty-three, and in twenty-four, they passed it. And it's the most they asked for out of any vote. And if it passed with flying colors. And he just talked about what they ended up doing differently in the community involvement, school involvement, staff, the book, just... So that was important, sat through that and listened. And then I think I did share with you guys, too, my last session I went to, I go this one every year. MREA recognizes teachers of excellence across the state of Minnesota. And this was definitely a representation of across Minnesota. There was Wadena, Thief River, Lake City, and Hancock were where they came from, so they're different regions of the state of Minnesota. But it is, it's just amazing to listen to these teachers talk about the classroom, talk about what they do and how they impact kids. And it's just super powerful. So it's good for me to hear, as an educator, I, that's why I'm here, I guess. And it's super exciting to hear them. I am working, I, I went and visited with all four of them after to see if there's a way I can invite them to our school and try to set up a system where we invite these teachers of excellence into our buildings the following year to do some staff development, to just do some staff visits, just to be here and give us some input. So anyway, that was good. Very, very good conference. Interesting enough, the book that we're doing with our admin team this year is Just Look Up by Joe Beckman. Unrelated, didn't know it, he was the main speaker there, so that was kind of cool. So, yeah, it was interesting as well. So very good conference. Admin meeting, we met last Thursday, and we went over, I had given them about three weeks to put things together, come up with some preliminary ideas with what we're going to be cutting, adjusting, whatever with our budget for next year. It was a very good session. We just went around, so everybody got to hear everybody. I shared what the district, Marcus and I, had talked about, so they got to see that ahead of time. I gave them in advance. Very good discussions. Now, next week, we decided to give them a Thanksgiving break, and I made with them this week. But next week, Marcus and I are meeting one-on-one with each principal and with each director to really fine tune some of the things we've already talked about. So that'll happen. Then in December, a meeting with the principal group again, and the director group individually after school. We're going to do a little mini work session for the admin team separate, and so we can get set up, which is the next thing on our agenda, is a work session for the board in January. Because I want to get these things all dialed in, so you guys can see options, thoughts, whatever, total numbers, what would it look like? And so sometime in January, we'd like to have a work session with you. If we feel that that meeting in January, hey, was super successful, but maybe we should meet again. Obviously, we can meet again in February. One of my goals was hopefully to share with staff that are going to be affected, tell them in January, but I'm not so sure that's fair or enough time to do what we need to do and vet it out to the depth we need to. So we typically wouldn't do that until late February, March, so we can meet again in February if we felt like, hey, we have some more questions still, or you guys have more questions. We most definitely can do that again. So I'll just throw this out now. The twenty-first to the twenty-eighth of January, those are Wednesdays, right? Those work best for us just because of activities, but you guys think about those. Wednesdays are tough, but we could, could we meet early? Everybody's got their own schedules. Church is going on, too, so...
I move to nights in January, because we have school board meetings on Mondays. I'm off Monday, Tuesday, but work every Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so I think...
So I might be out. I could maybe take some time off, but it would, just being night shift, I would probably need supervisor coverage.
Would be different.
So it'll just be a little trickier, but not impossible, just...
So you guys tell me, too, what you think. I think Brooke and I can, what, why don't we just send out kind of like, like, hey, Nicole, what you're, tell us, hey, these nights are harder, these nights are better. And then we can see, hopefully, we can find, hey, maybe it's Monday after of work. I don't know, you know, those are things, too. So why don't we send something out, and if you guys just want to respond back to us individually, and then we'll send it out to the group and say, here are the three dates or the best times or maybe? And then we'll just go from there, so I think...
I do.
Yeah, I'm sure, no.
I personally have a little bit of concern about pushing it out to letting impacted teachers know by March timeframe. Does anybody else feel that, like, concerned?
Like, not enough time or too soon?
I just, I want to give impacted teachers an opportunity to find out this opportunity. And so I, I personally would love to move quick. I know that's really challenging. We need to be very thoughtful as well, but the end of March makes me a little bit nervous.
I would just say that it's February into March is typical of when you, when you typically let a staff member know that they're, that you had to make some budget cuts or just a cut in general. That is usually the timeline. Most schools don't post jobs until, I would say the earliest would be April, typically, yeah, for the following year.
I was really excited when we were talking January, because those are...
Yeah, I, I, I did too, yeah, and it's a...
Not ideal, and I just wanted to...
No, appreciate it, yeah, sounds good. We had talked about doing a session in December, but frankly, with everything going on, about there'd be knives thrown, so it wouldn't be good. It's just a tough month.
Yeah, and, and, and kind of back to Angela's point, too. You know, let's say we meet middle of January, whatever. We can meet again in, in January or early February, so we could still probably let people know, you know, in February potentially, if, if we feel comfortable, right, with that decision, I guess, whatever that might be.
I think my personal ask is let's just take that into consideration, knowing we have little updates on our calendars.
That's fair. And I guess that, that's all I had, so if there's questions for me...
Any other questions? All right, we'll go on. Seven point one, this is to approve the regular meeting on November tenth to November twenty-five. Ever motion?
So...
Motion by Nicole, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Angela. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion here. On set number, on the consent agenda number eight, approve the bills for November two thousand twenty-five, and the amount of two hundred and, I don't know, farther...
Forty thousand, forty thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Two thousand, two hundred and one thousand nine four dollars.
Two hundred and forty.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gave you just the other, I didn't give you a fun two and fun four. That's right there.
Two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. I was, sorry.
Fun one.
That went very well.
Yes. Fun one makes me the most nervous. That's why I highlighted. Sorry.
Approve the resignation of Allison Brown, uh, paraprofessional effective November 10th, 2025. Approve the resignation of Brooke Dudley, paraprofessional effective November 13th, 2025. And approve the resignation of Lisa Helgeson, food staff, food service, effective November 13th, 2025. And approve the resignation of Melissa Wallinger, custodian, effective November 26th, 2025. Do you have a motion? Uh, motion by Troy, uh, second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to number nine, doing unfinished business. Uh, nine point one, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Alexis Haas, paraprofessional class two step one, effective December 1st, 2025. Do you have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, I have a second. Second by Micah. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Nine point two, this is, uh, the world's best workforce, formerly known as world's best workforce, comprehensive achievement and civic readiness summary report. To approve this report, summary report. Do I have a motion?
A vote.
Motion by Angela, second.
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Just again, um, great job by everyone to get those, um, to meet those goals. It's the first time I've been on the board, seventh year. So this is great. We, uh, met our goals. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Nine point three, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Josh Dockett, custodian, class two, step three, effective November 17th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Troy, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to nine point. This is to approve donations as presented. And I think we have a resolution here, but I won't go through the resolution. But, um, this part that we have a resolution passes by two-thirds majority of the members. This is from the Lady Rebel Clubs Club in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents for girls basketball uniforms. And from the Touchdown Club in the amount of one thousand dollars for miscellaneous state expenses. Thank them both for generous donations. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, I have a second. Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. We'll go by her. All right. Nicole.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
David. Aye. Micah.
Aye.
Angela. Resolution. Nine point five, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Sarah Glad, paraprofessional, class two, step five. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Angela. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to nine point six, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Alicia Davis, paraprofessional, class two, step three, effective November 24th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Troy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. On to nine point seven, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Alex Mayr, maintenance, class four, step one, effective November 24th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Troy or by Micah. Uh, the second, by Nicole.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Welcome back. Uh, nine point eight, this is to approve, uh, Katie Omen is the middle school principal effective the start of the 2026, 2027 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Micah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion carries. Revelations to Katie. Uh, ten point one, the next school board meeting, Tuesday, December 16th, 2025, six o'clock here in Glendon Media Center. Um, tip.
That's the media center.
Oh, not here.
It's not the media center.
Not here. Good note is that.
It's in Glendon.
It will be in Glendon, but not in this room. It'll be in the media center. Realize that. All right. It takes me a little while. Next, ten point two, the facilities slash transportation meeting, we'll put it on the same date. And then it will follow this work meeting in the Glendon Media Center, not. All right. On to number 11, this is, uh, motion to adjourn the regular meeting of this board here. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second? Second by Troy. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Both. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, yeah, yeah. I did read there.